Okay, welcome everyone. I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council Meeting of September 1st, 2020 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag. Okay. Relatively short agenda tonight. First up, consent agenda. Approve Town Council Meeting Minutes of August 3rd, 2020. Town Council Meeting Minutes of August 17th, 2020. Accept the transcript of July 20th, 2020 as the record of the hearing regarding amendments to Chapter 272 and 273. Approve refund resulting from an overpayment by a taxpayer of 2019 tangible tax submitted by the tax collector. Approve abatements resulting from adjustments and corrections to 2020 real property and tangible taxes submitted by the tax assessor. Ratify and approve the Ninth Local Declaration of Emergency from September 1st to October 4th, 2020.
Can you pull transcript of July 20, 2020?
I'm not doing the video here, hold on.
Frank, I'm here.
Okay. Hold on Sharon. I don't know why your video is coming through, but...
Because I said you can watch me.
I know, but I can't see anything else. You're taking over my whole screen.
Okay, well, you know...
Chris, can I minimize this?
Up at the top right where it says Speaker View, if you change that to Gallery View, it'll be a little bit more.
Okay. All right, fine. All right. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I'm sorry, Lisa, Barbara.
I'll make a motion to approve Town Council, I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda except for the transcript of July 2020.
Second. Motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's page six.
Page six.
Line 14. It's a typo. The word "only" should be "own." O-W-N. And page 11. Line 7.
Yep.
What I did on Zero Main Street is I added 15%. So please add the word "added" between "I" and "15." Otherwise, it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Motion to approve the transcript of July 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No unanimously, Lisa, thank you. Okay. First item under new business. I put the Chief of Police to give a report. I've been wanting to do this for some time now. I've attended a few Richmond Town Council meetings in the past, and Chief Elwood Johnson gives a nice general updates to the council as well as the community. And I feel it has a lot of value, especially what's going on in today's world, out in the crazy world we live in. So I asked the Chief to kind of give some general updates from his department since we haven't really seen him at meetings. And I just think it's important for us to stay close to our largest and most expensive department we have at the town. So Chief Palmer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing on the agenda is Brittany Carpenter. She's our newest recruit. She's at the Academy now. She's in her sixth week right now. She started on July 27th. I usually make a routine to get down there the first day for about two hours when we have a recruit down there, so I can see them in action. The Academy puts on a, it's a stressful situation that first day and quite honestly throughout the whole Academy. That first day, first couple hours is daunting. And I watched Brittany, and I thought she was very composed. I felt very comfortable when she was being affronted. And I felt very comfortable. So I spoke to Detective Forbes earlier today. He had spoken to her yesterday, feels that she's doing well. He also spoke to the liaison at the Academy. And they had role-playing last week, and they felt she's just where she should be. And felt pretty comfortable that she's right now moving forward. Kind of give you an idea of who she is. She's 25 years old, she's from the area, she's graduated from Cherahoe in 2013. She moved on to URI for two years in the pharmaceutical program, which is a very difficult curriculum. She decided to start working for Richmond DBW. At the same time, she was a volunteer for the Carolina Fire Department. Those seven years there. She comes well recommended from Chief Johnson and Chief Barbara from Carolina. She had to go through three different phases to get where she is now. That's the oral board, the written test, and the agility test. There were a total of 15 applicants, and clearly the board felt that she was the best qualified for the position. And she's due to graduate on December 16th. And quite honestly, I think all the officers are looking for the diversification of a new officer here. That's the first agenda. The second agenda is commendations. As you well know, just about every year, I bring the commendations in front of the Town Council so that they can be honored in front of you and in front of their families. Unfortunately, with the COVID-19, it has plagued us, that's put a hold on it. I don't want it to go away because these gentlemen are, it's worthwhile for them to get back in it, but it doesn't look like it's going to be for another probably six months or so. But I don't want this to be forgotten. So I just want to give you a very quick synopsis of three commendations that I've issued, and I will again put them in front of the Town Council later. The first one is Sergeant Eastwood in August of 2020, correction, 2019. He stopped a vehicle for speeding in Ashway and where else. And smelled the odor of marijuana, went through the car, and he came up with approximately 10 grams of fentanyl. 14 bags. It was signs that the suspect was selling that, that there were narcotic logs in there, there were scales. So we charged him with possession of fentanyl with intent to deliver. Just so you're aware, 10 grams of marijuana, doesn't sound like a lot of marijuana. You have 10 grams of fentanyl, that can cause a lot of overdoses, a lot of deaths. And so this was a very worthwhile commendation. Second one is actually a group of officers, Captain Carrier, Patrolman Gashone, Nutting, and Rock Williams. Back in September of 2019, we received a call, a 911 hangup. It was a distraught female that was intoxicated. She had a handgun. She was going to commit suicide. Officers saw that, backed out, got her perimeter with other police departments in the area. And she was in and out of the house and waving the gun at police officers, at herself. I think that all the officers there used a great deal of restraint. They developed a plan to arrest her without, and they did so without injuries. And I'll get more into that when I actually give out the presentation. But the arrest was basically to get her the help that she needed. So, and that was done. The third commendation, Detective Forbes. The investigation lasted from August to January. Back in August, a mother and her child came into the station distraught. The daughter, young Cherahoe high school student, had been lured into to send an explicit photograph of herself, and she thought it was to a 17-year-old male in the Cherahoe High School. It was a 24-year-old predator out of New Jersey. And Detective Forbes did a great job grabbing, gaining a rapport with the family members, convinced them to prosecute. The most difficult part of that is now trying to find that person. And I'm not going to get into all the details of it, but he did many search warrants. He was a liaison to several different departments because it turns out that another Cherahoe female was getting the same, had the same issues out of Hope Valley Barracks that we're investigating. U.S. Attorney's Office were very interested. They actually applauded Detective Forbes in the press release once he got arrested for his tenacity. Basically, based on his information and warrant, New Jersey State Police did a search warrant and arrest warrant in New Jersey about child porn and other items that we're using to prosecute. Actually, he gave a full confession here, extradition back to Rhode Island, and he's facing 15 years minimum mandatory. So real good event and six months of a lot of work. So that's the second agenda. Third agenda, I'm hoping most of the public has already heard about this through our Facebook, Richmond's Facebook, West Police's Facebook, Stonington. It's, we've had a rash of stolen motor vehicles and vehicle break-ins. We've put this out to beware. We've had in the past where young kids might go through a neighborhood and they're looking through, you know, for change and a few dollars here and there. This is a group of, or several groups of people, some of them may be gang members, that are coming into the southern part of Rhode Island. The towns that I just named, Jamestown got hit pretty hard here. Where they're coming down, their real goal is to steal the vehicles. They're looking for vehicles with keys in the car. Because right now, it's very difficult to steal a car without a tow truck without that key. So my prompt is to, number one, make sure you don't leave your keys in the car. Number two, the same people, if they don't find keys, they're still going to rummage through your vehicle, steal pocketbooks, credit cards, use those. The vehicles that they steal, many times they're using them for another crime. May it be drug dealing, B&amp;Es, robberies, things such as that. So the word of wise is really is take your keys out of there. Don't leave your valuables in there. Lock them up. And if you are going to leave some valuables, don't make them visible. If you leave a $10 bill in a console, they're going to see that, and even if your door's unlocked, you're going to cost $200 worth of damage to get that $10 bill. So please, I know we all feel comfortable living here in Hopkinton, but keep your items safe. The other thing I would say also is you have the garage door open in there. And if you leave your door unlocked, many times that gives somebody access to not only your garage, but possibly into your own house, which is clearly a safety issue. So please, just keep yourself safe.
Okay, great, Chief. So I guess if any councils have any questions for the Chief on any items you brought up tonight, I'll start with Sharon because she's remote. Sharon, any questions on what the Chief went over tonight?
Yeah, I wanted to know how many female officers are in the police department?
This will be the first one that has been under my command. They did have one previous to me back in the early 2000s that I believe was here for three to four years.
Okay.
So she's the second, I believe?
Yes.
In HPD history?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks Sharon. Scott, any comments, questions for the Chief on his items?
I'm going to go off the items and just thank the Chief for an issue that some of the people were mentioning on social media about the running the stop sign at the end of Chase Hill Road and Route 216. And I brought that to the attention of Town Manager, and I thanked the police for their consideration on that matter, that some of the people are interested in town. And also, we have a leash law in town, and apparently there's some concern about roaming dogs in town, which is in violation. So I know that's off-topic, and I'm probably wrong procedurally to mention that, but I just want to thank the Chief and any assistance the Hopkinton Police can give in those issues and our dog officer, or I should say correctly, our animal control officer. Sorry for using the term dog officer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Barbara?
No, I just really appreciate that you're here and discussing with us what the police department and the different policemen are doing. I think it's important for everyone to recognize that and recognize how they truly are here to serve and protect and really try to help people. And if you do have a major concern, I am really glad that they can go to the police station and immediately have someone that can help them who will be there. And I'm assuming that's 24 hours a day.
Absolutely. We encourage you.
Go ahead.
I said absolutely, we encourage you.
I think that's one of the best things in a small community, when you can trust that. So I thank you for all of the information and the goodwill for the different officers, because we certainly have quite a number, we are 15, and they're really wonderful men. And they do great jobs, and eventually we'll be able to say wonderful men and women. This is wonderful. I'm so glad you're bringing in a young woman.
Me too. Thank you.
Delia?
Yeah, I want to share with you something about your department that stands out. And this is a real-life example, something that's happened over the past few years. And that is that there was a, which happens all over, but there happened to be a problem with a resident, long-term drug use, obvious addiction problems. And has seriously impacted her view on reality. And she was homeless and just kind of wandered. So when she had a meltdown in Westley due to drugs, she was arrested for trespassing and violating a restraining order. So the police brought her in, and within hours, they let her go. The same woman, and she has a history of more than a decade of minor arrests, usually drug-related. But when she had a, quote, I say meltdown, she had a serious event and really didn't, couldn't deal with reality and was having a problem just in a neighborhood wandering around, the police were called in Hopkinton. And clearly, she had severe problems with whatever drugs she was taking. So the Hopkinton Police picked her up, and they didn't just let her loose or hold her, took her upstate and got her to the, well, I assume it was, I forget the name of it. One of the health, the mental health, I forget the name of it.
Butler?
Butler, Butler, it was probably Butler. But anyway, so that's, that was the difference that I've heard with the Hopkinton Police, that they're not likely to, somebody who has serious mental health issues and is having a real hard time and for whatever reason, got her the help that she needed. And I just wanted to commend your police officers for doing that. Not just grabbing somebody and throwing them somewhere or letting them loose after a few hours because they're not quiet. I'm sure there are times in the police department when you have people in their cells, and they're not quiet all night or all day or for 24 hours or for, you know, it's ongoing and can get quite loud. And in this instance, they knew right away that was a problem, a health issue. So anyway, I wanted to just commend your department for helping, whether they live in this town or not, when somebody needs help. Your department is always there. When, when the neighbors, this was before your time, when the neighbors in my area heard a scream, and it happened to be my eight-year-old who went outside, and she screamed. And, and you know, a kid, a girl, and you can imagine how loud a scream could be. And somebody in the neighborhood heard this child scream, called the police. They were there four minutes, because I heard this scream and went outside. She screamed because her kitten was up in the tree. But they were there like that. Now, did they come in and see the cat and understand? No, they questioned her and they questioned us, and they wanted to make sure that that was the reason she screamed, because of cats. So anyway, that's a long, a couple of stories, but it just goes to show that we've got good officers in town, and I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. And we do have good officers here. And I would like, you made a good point there, and point out to the public that we have a program through Kodak that everybody should be aware of, whether it be, you know, a relative or somebody that is having some substance abuse. If you call us, we will get you the help you need. We have this program, and it's run, it's a liaison between the state police and ourselves and many other departments there. But if someone wants help, we'll get them that help. So feel free, that's what we do.
Cats in trees?
Cats in trees for two.
People driving down streets and they don't stop and it's a dead end? Speeders, drug abusers, whatever, you hear it all.
Well, jack all trays.
Yeah, and you know, they also, my neighborhood is very popular at Halloween. So when all the children and all the parents have dropped off van loads of children in my neighborhood, which we all like and expect, we always have a policeman in a car who's either sitting at the front of the neighborhood, making sure everyone realizes that there's a policeman here as well in a marked car. And then takes a drive around the neighborhood with the lights flashing, which the kids think is so exciting. It's just wonderful. Everything from, you know, little Peapods, you know, up to Transformers. So it's really appreciated on any number of levels.
Thank you.
Chief, I just have a quick follow-up question on number two, as far as the commendations. I know for the suicidal suspect, you had mentioned that de-escalation. It was Captain Carrier, Nutting, and who else?
Patrolman Gashone and Rock Williams.
Oh, okay, yeah, Rob's the...
It's actually, yeah, Rock Williams. It's Phil Williams. He's the Westley Officer, he's called Retire Officers Corporation or Corpseman, I should say.
And that situation got de-escalated, and she got the help.
Yeah, they did.
That's really important, because, you know, especially in today's world, it seems like other police departments around the country, and they seem to, well, I shouldn't say that, but they seem to perhaps shoot first and ask questions later, perhaps.
It must be tough with adrenaline.
It's very, it's very difficult, it's very high stress. And I think, you know, everybody needs to have a little more restraint, perhaps, and you guys certainly showed that for sure in that situation and others, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, certainly.
Really important, really important. I think it also builds trust within the community too, that you didn't act first, you tried to negotiate and de-escalate. And I'm glad she just didn't point and shoot, you know? Because it might have been a little different outcome, perhaps.
It's a concern, especially when she's waving it around towards the officers, but they knew that what her real goal was, so there was a lot of restraint. And obviously, when I'm presenting the commendations, I'll get into it a little bit more, but great job all three of us.
Yeah, great job all around, yeah, thank you, thank you, Chief.
And you know, I think that the other point of that is that in the last 10 years, there has been such good training, consistent training and consistent effort at information and understanding a different world. And I really appreciate that, because that's very difficult for anyone. I always find it amazing that they have to do so, that the policemen have to handle so many different categories of trauma on any number of levels, from what they would have done, you know, in the 1900, in the 20th century. Thank you.
Okay, Chief, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Another report in a couple of weeks, three weeks or so, thank you.
All right, very good.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, next up is public forum. I guess if you want to be heard, just raise your hand and I'll unmute you. Has to unmute. Joe? Joe?
Hi Frank, can you hear me okay?
I can now, yep.
I hope you don't see my picture there.
No, just Sharon's. It's been reduced.
Good evening. Good evening, this is Joe Moreau from Old Depot Road. And I just wanted to point out that I've noticed a lot of good information has been on our website, on the homepage. I've looked at the left side especially, where there's election information, there's tax bill information, the operating budget, you just click on it and it's available. You know, I've been quick to criticize in the past, and I want to compliment, I've seen a big improvement with the sharing of information with our towns residents. Thank you to those responsible for the information. Another new thing I noticed under the new business is the Chief of Police Report. I'm glad that the Chief shared information about the car thefts and the break-ins, and he discussed other topics. Our vehicles are always locked in the garage, but I never thought about someone that leaves their vehicle outside of their garage and they have a garage door opener. Just never crossed my mind. I hope this is an agenda item every month, just before the public forum, so that residents can discuss issues. We recently had an issue on Old Depot Road, and the Chief and his staff did a great job to correct the issues of speeding and reckless driving. It was like night and day, you know, one day you've got five or six kids racing down the road. After I spoke to the Chief, the next, I haven't seen that happen since I spoke to the Chief. They've had offices on our road, they put a sign out front for the speed of the vehicles. In fact, today, when I was going out, I saw a police officer with radar, and I stopped to thank them for the job that they're doing, because it really made it much safer on Old Depot Road. Earlier, I mentioned about the good information on our website, on the homepage. I would like to see information about our police and fire departments and other departments on that site. For an example, if there's a workshop, if there's, someone has questions about disposing of their old prescription. There's a lot of good information that could be shared, and maybe it would help to encourage more residents to be involved in our great town. One of the things that I just realized, I saw this yesterday, and Scott Bill had posted about it, there was an issue with two dogs that were on leashes attacked on Tom Quad Road by the trail by a loose dog that was just running around. That could be some information that could be shared on our website. You know, the police department, animal control, it would, you know, with each other, it would be better off for our town, because we'll be sharing that information. Last thing I want to say is I know our Council President usually prepares the agenda for council meetings, and I would like to thank Frank for adding on the new business the Chief of Police Report. In my opinion, the Chiefs of the Police and the Fire Department should have a report each month as an agenda item, followed by the public forum. Other departments could also share information. If it's a simple thing that I just picked up tonight about leaving your remote in an unlocked vehicle, that could potentially save someone's lives from a break-in, that's important information. I want to thank the town, I think we're doing a much better job of sharing information. And I would encourage this council to continue with the agenda items for police, fire, and other departments. And thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I want to go see the South Fitz win at this point. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that, you know, as a former officer of the Ashway Fire District, the two fire districts in the town of Hopkinn are independent of town government, and they do have meetings. So the best thing to do is to contact either the Hope Valley Wyoming Fire District or the Ashway Fire District, and how you can bring forward your ideas on fire protection. But the town is not involved in fire protection. We're not like many other towns that have, the fire department is part of town government... We're not like many other towns that have, the fire department is part of town government or receives funding from the town. They're independent from town government. I know it's confusing, especially if you come from a town that, the town or municipality is involved in fire protection, but we're not in the town of Hopkins. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else for public forum? Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Excuse me?
Hold on. One second, Scott.
Hold on, Scott. President Landolfi, I'd like to bring up a matter of personal privilege. I want to take this time to clarify and address the record concerning the council vote taken on January 22nd, 2019, establishing the amendment to Chapter 246, Non-Residential Photovoltaic Solar Energy System, the PSES. This vote was not unanimous at five to zero. I voted against the amendment. I understand the confusion after reviewing the video record of the meeting held at Hope Valley Elementary School. After the "I" vote to approve the ordinance amendment, the yelling, clapping, and other noises thoroughly covered the question of the vote. Council President Landolfi had stood, was a distance from his microphone when I asked him if he was going to ask for the "nay" votes. He then asked, "I voted no." It was understandably not heard on the video record and obviously not heard by our town clerk who was present as well. Not double-checking the stenographer's final vote by council was my error in reviewing the transcript. I checked that everything I had said was correct, and it was. During the entire meeting, I spoke against the ordinance amendment specifically calling the 3% or three-acre solar maximum proposition as simply allowing these arrays to spring up around town like warts on a toad. My vote was against small solar arrays for anyone except legitimate farmers. I repeat, I voted against the motion to amend. The council vote should read, approved four to one. Respectfully, Barbara Kapalba.
Okay. Scott?
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn in memory of the late Mary Lou Fisk.
And Council President, I wish to adjourn in honor of and thankfulness to Timothy Teft for his many years of service to the town of Hopkinton as Director of Public Works. His integrity, knowledge, and professionalism benefited the health, safety, and well-being of all Hopkinton citizens. He will be sorely missed, but I wish he and his wife well with their move and future plans. Thank you very much, Tim Teft.
Thank you. Well said. Barbara and Scott, okay?
Okay, I will include that in my motion. And in memory of Mary Lou Fisk, who grew up in town, Kelly Sullivan's mother, for people that don't know, a very nice lady. And I include that with the motion that Barbara just made.
Second.
Okay, motion made in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it unanimous? Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Sharon.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Kevin?
Good night, thanks.
Bye, Kev.
I'd like to...